Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. It's 4:33 PM. It's a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. And we have one item on a closed session agenda. And we have three council members in attendance. We're waiting for one more. So we have a quorum to start the meeting. So please be patient. We should start hopefully in just a couple of minutes. Right, Ms. Kendall, would you please take a roll call?
Well, do thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Spadari?
I'm here.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
I have scheduled absent today is council, our council members Tomlinson and McAdams. And currently absent is Mayor Protem Emilio.
We have one item on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. And a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadari?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
And Council, I mean Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Aye from Mayor Protem. Motion carries 502. Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson absent.
Mr. Pirik, would you please read the agenda item?
Yes, I can do that. So Public Employment Government Code, Section 54957. The title is City Manager Performance Evaluation.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Mayor, there is no one present in the chamber, and I do not see any online.
All right, thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session. We'll return to a regular meeting, open session at 6:00 PM. Good evening and welcome. It's Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. Call the meeting to order. Would you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti? Spadari? Absent today, Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson.
Would you please join me with the pledge of allegiance?
From the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, second.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Spadari? Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries 502. Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson absent.
Thank you. We have a presentation, pickpg.org. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to transition to Ms. McKinder, who is going to be sharing her screen for a very brief presentation of this new website. Ms. McKinder?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So I'm the IT management analyst for the city, and I just wanted to demo this new website for everyone. It's called PickPG. It's for our business community, and we just launched this website on Tuesday. So it's available for everyone to help existing businesses in our community, and also to help attract new businesses to join our community. So I'm just going to go ahead and scroll through our homepage here. We've got a lot of resources on here, whether it's financial information, whether you're trying to find information on a parklet scene, get information on different business districts, statistics on the demographics, and visitor information in our area, who's behind the scenes. Laurel O'Halloran will be our Economic Development Coordinator, and she's also our city planner. She'll be available every Wednesday, dedicated to answering and assisting businesses with any questions they may have, and reviews from just businesses in our community. So this is a collaborative effort between the City of Pacific Grove and the Chamber of Commerce, and I welcome you to visit it and enjoy the resources. That's all I have.
Ms. McKinder, did you want to show real quick what the website looks like? Are you able to share your screen just for a real quick glimpse?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought it was sharing already.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can go back here. Okay, there we go. You see my screen now?
There we go. Thank you.
Sure. So let me refresh the homepage here. And I'll just go through and scroll through the homepage. Apologies about that. So like I mentioned, there are a lot of resources here for our business community, whether you're looking to start business here, or if you're already in our community and have questions looking to grow your business, or any questions you may have if you're trying to apply for water credits, create a parklet. And these resources are here for you. We also do list any commercial properties that are available. And this, we do advise you, reach out to these listings directly, but we try to share that information with you here as well. But yes, I welcome you to visit this website, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinder.
Sure.
Go to council and staff announcements. Mr. Pirik?
Sorry about that. I had to pin my button. I have no announcements. There's nothing to report out of closed session.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
We have no announcements tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council announcements? All right, well, I've got a couple. First of all, thank you very much to the candidates that ran our last election, Mike Wachs for mayor, and then our council candidates, Darla Vining, Mark Chacklin, Tina Rao, Debbie Beck, Lori McDonald, and Joe Emilio, our Mayor Protem. Thank you very much. It takes time and effort, commitment, and a willingness to serve. And that's much appreciated. That's the way our democracy and our city government work best. And second of all, it's time to fill out an application to help out in city government. We're taking applications for boards, commissions, committees, and our task force. The application form and information can be found on the city clerk's website. And all you need to do is fill that out, send that to our city clerk, and also you could send it to me, or both of us actually would be preferred. The current, some of the appointed officials for these boards, commissions, and committees, they end at the end of January, so this is the annual turnover for many of the positions. You can find more information online for each committee. And oh, please, I'm suggesting December 21st. Not a very hard deadline, but please, let's get those applications in by December 21st to be considered. Thank you. All right, now turn to general public comment. We'll start with the in-person audience here. If you'd please come to the podium. Welcome.
Congratulations to all the candidates who ran. I saw that the vote's still not in yet. They're still counting, apparently. So the M is going to pass by almost 20%. And so I'm here to talk about that. And I want to just tell a personal story. I've given you all a lot of facts and data and information. And the story is this, that my mom smoked a long time ago. My dad passed away from lung cancer. Her brothers, Bob, his wife smoked, Larice, wonderful person, just a terrific lady. She smoked. She died of lung cancer. It was a horrible, horrible process to watch them go through that. And, you know, back then, the tobacco companies were spending a lot of money to convince us that smoking was okay, that it was safe, that it was not harmful. And back then, they didn't have the little notice on the side of the package. If you remember what that was, smoking and tobacco causes cancer and birth defects. Now we have that. Everybody knows it. Most people don't smoke. Right? So we knew that then. What do we know today about this? So I handed out a packet. You have it in front of you. There's an article. I won't go over it from the American Journal of Radiology comparing people who have smoked and people who've smoked cannabis or marijuana. And the second one is twice as deadly as the first one, cannabis being the more deadly one. Now, I'm going to run out of time here, and I don't want to do that, but I'm just going to hold this up. Does anybody know what this is? Anybody seen this before? This is the Prop 65 warning that's supposed to go on cannabis. Tobacco companies spent millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to avoid that packaging label going on cigarettes. Cannabis companies are spending tens of millions of dollars to prevent this from going on cannabis project. It says, if you read it, "contains chemicals known by the state of California to cause cancer and birth defects." In other words, the toxins in marijuana and cannabis are toxic to reproductive health. They cause cancer and birth defects. So nobody told my mom, nobody told Larice this. But now you see what is happening here. You see what the warning label is. You know this. If somebody later, if we pass this, because it's an advisory vote, and if we end up with a cannabis shop here in Pacific Grove, and somebody says to you five years from now, "My daughter died. I have a kid with birth defects," you can't say, "I didn't know," because you do know. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, those of you who are here, and to all the good turnout of residents and interested peoples, police security, so you know we're safe here. And this is, as you said earlier, Mayor, this is what makes a democracy work. So I want to encourage those of you at home, and those of you who watch this later on YouTube, you know, this is replayed on YouTube if you search Pacific Grove City Council. So it's worth, it's worth watching. And I want to tell you, I want to back up Mr. Gibbs' information about the marijuana, because back in the early 1950s, when I was a little boy, my aunt had a scratchy throat. She smoked. She went to the doctor, and she said, "Hey, doctor, I have a scratchy throat." And the doctor said, "What brand do you smoke?" She said, "Philip Morris." He said, "Change brands." That was his advice from a medical doctor at that time, because they didn't know anything about these labels on cigarettes. And someday, this may be the case with this marijuana product, these products. We're going to say, gee, why didn't they put that warning on there? How many doctors are going to tell people, "Oh, you got high. Don't worry about it. It's medicinal," and so forth? I'm very questioning that. Is my time showing here somewhere? No, it's changed?
Is it?
Yes, in the upper, upper left corner.
There's a little, it used to be a counter here, used to tell you how much time you had left. Oh, there it is. Okay, now I see it. Thank you. I got a minute and a half. Okay, I'm mainly here because I want to share with you the joy that I have had over the 45 years that I've lived here, meeting so many wonderful neighbors, and don't forget tourists, who come to town, who I meet on the bike path, who I chat with. Some are from the east, some are from California, whatever, different countries. Wonderful people of many different races, nationalities, ethnicities, and sexual orientation, all of whom I appreciate meeting. In fact, many of those categories go for my neighbors as well as the tourists. So I just want to share with you what a wonderful town Pacific Grove is, and how you have helped maintain that integrity, although it's in everybody's hearts. You know, Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Judge every person by their character, not by the color of their skin, and everyone is welcome here, tourist, resident alike." Okay, the rents are a little high, so are the property values, but if you can make the grade economically, it's a wonderful place to live. You know, we won an award as Pacific Coast's most quintessential town. Quintessential town, Pacific Grove, a beautiful town. And in the Arctic, you look it up online, Pacific Grove, Quincy. Gosh, now I'm tongue-tied. You know what I mean. Okay? So anyway, thank you for listening to me. I want to thank you all for being elected at some point in the past, not just being candidates. You were candidates, now you're officials. So thank you for serving the community. I appreciate all of you. Thank you very much. And remember what Mr. Gibbs said. Bye.
Thank you.
We have two callers online, Mr. Mayor. Inga Lawrence and Dimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. I heard something rather disturbing today that I would really like to hear more about, and this was at the Historic Resources Committee meeting. And it was just kind of alluded to between staff and one of the commissioners about time that coming this next year, we're going to have time limits on Zoom meetings, or limited Zoom meetings, or some sort of thing about this. But I would really appreciate hearing about it from staff and council, and not rumor. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't hear anything about that either, so. Any, next person?
Tim?
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just calling in because I just wanted to make everybody aware that last Sunday during the half marathon, I was down at the area of Hopkins Beach monitoring the harbor seals as I do. And we had a scary situation there, because there's like, obviously, thousands of runners that are on both the street and the rec trail at some point. And we had two separate incidences of deer getting caught in this massive amount of people going in different directions, including bicyclists that were not part of the people with the race, and then tourists, of course, walking down the trail during this whole thing. And the deer didn't know which way to go, and they were running back and forth against the fence, hitting the fence. The first two eventually were able to get through the wooden fence into Hopkins Marine Station. But the second one, the second incident, the deer ran back and forth for 10 minutes, frothing at the mouth, it was so stressed out, hitting the fence, limping, nearly hit a young girl and her mom that were walking on the trail there. And then eventually, we had called the police, but before they got there, the deer finally ran into the traffic and up First Street. So this particular block is rather dangerous to have the race done that way with thousands of people. So they might want to think before next year, whoever plans this, to either divert away from that particular spot where the fence is, or run the race only on the street, having it go in both directions on one side, the other, but not have it on the rec trail and the street, because the deer have no place to go. And it was rather a dangerous situation with that animal nearly hitting people and running into traffic. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about that, because it was kind of a, not a good situation down there. So thank you for, for taking my comment.
Thank you.
Darla Vining?
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself, Darla Vining.
Thank you, Sandra. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Joe Emilio, Lori McDonald, Debbie Beck, and last but not least, Mayor Bill Peak on their victories in this election. Pacific Grove's future rests not in elected officials or government, but all of us. We need smart people who are going to honor the institutions of this city. I'm concerned that this city, as we move forward, may get worse before it gets better. Many of us already know that, and primarily the reason I ran for city council in the first place. I can assure you, the effort to run for city council was worth it. There were several occasions during my campaign where I would meet with people that genuinely said, "Thank you for running." I remember the first person that said it to me. It was Mayor Bill Peak. It was at the Butterfly Sanctuary in front of my history teacher. At a farmer's market, I talked to an instructor that taught me government my junior year. To hear that she voted for me was all I needed to continue my campaign, but that matured. My final thoughts tonight are to continue to shed light and discussion on affordable housing solutions for our senior population. I'd like to support the indigenous people that can trace their history back seven generations to the 1840s, where the property of the Noah Building stands today. I can't urge the city council enough to help small businesses and PG. Today, we have a new business in PG that just opened their doors this year and are already outgrowing the building that they are currently in on Forest Avenue. The business is so unique that they have customers coming from Palo Alto to use their services, and I just found that this weekend. How amazing it is to know that we have businesses that are attracting customers from out of town just for aquatic therapy services. PG needs to invest in this growth. All in all, I would have loved to be victorious. I thought I should be victorious, but I have to speak to loss. I came up short, but I will never stop fighting for us. I thank all of you.
Thank you.
Men's Friday Breakfast.
I'm not sure why I came up with that. This is Richard Picat. Had my home here in Pacific Grove for 30-plus years. Four years ago, Pacific Grove had what by any measure was a model short-term rental program that controlled and regulated the microscopic number of short-term rentals in the non-coastal areas of the city. And small local businesses prospered from families wanting to visit the area. These were nice, happy people, and based on the city receiving virtually no validated complaints, the visitors, mainly families, enjoyed the area alongside our community. At the October city council meeting, a councilman made the following statement, and I will try to report this exactly as it was stated. As regards the tangent on Measure M, actually, what's happened here is that most of the homes, or a great deal, number of homes, nearly 75 were sold as a result. So people came into the market trying to cash in on our neighborhoods, bought second homes to rent them out as short-term rentals. And then when Measure M was adopted, even though they promised to be here forever, they quickly got out of town. So it was a question of profiteering, and that quickly went away when Measure M was adopted. The fact is, from the time Measurement M was passed in 2018 until October of this year, that is four years, 84% of the homes that were short-term rentals in a non-coastal area have not been sold. This toxic kind of exaggeration has found its way from one of our council members into the local social media, such that one poster, probably at 10 times, has found some obscure language in the city charter, simply guiding city leadership to maintain a residential flavor. And that, that posting has slid into a gang-like approach, saying that the mayor and city employees might be subject to criminal charges. Now we have people not just enjoying leisurely walks through the neighborhoods, but searching for homes that they think might be occupied less than 100% of the time. The councilperson's rhetoric has substantially reduced the quality of life for the families of Pacific Grove.
Thank you.
Never hands are raised.
Okay, well, move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, this is Brian. I do have an answer to the question that was, I think, presented by a member of the public earlier, if you want me to give it. It was about the length of the Zoom meetings.
Sure. This topic, I've not heard anything on this topic, so please.
Yeah. What it is, is there was an assembly bill passed a couple of months ago. I think it was 2449, but don't quote me on the number. And what it says is that AB 361, which is what you've been using to have your Zoom meetings, that that is going to sunset, meaning go away, in February, because it's expected that the governor is going to hand the declaration of emergency at that point in time. So in terms of opportunities for council members to attend on a teleconferencing basis, the rules will be a little bit different. There's going to be requirements to show just cause and good cause and things like that. And I believe I sent an email on that, but I'll double-check. But the reason I'm speaking tonight is that this would not inhibit the city from continuing to have hybrid meetings, so that, you know, all it does is affect the ability of council members to attend by teleconference. But in terms of members of the public, they would still be able to attend, assuming the city continues with its hybrid style, as you've had in the past.
Thank you for that clarification. And that law doesn't have anything to do with the time or the length of time of Zoom meetings, as far as I'm aware.
And you're right about that. It does not.
Yeah. Moving to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull Item 8F. That's workers' compensation. And you will hear that as Item 12B. Unfinished and ongoing business. Any other items council members would like to pull? And the check register, that is 8A. And how about if we make that 12C? Okay. Any, any other items? Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item?
No online hands are raised.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda?
Second.
And a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
And Spadari?
Aye.
Motion carries 502. Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson absent.
We just approved council minutes from November 2nd. We've held a second reading and adopted an ordinance regarding the California Building Standards Codes. We've received reports on core revenue for October, and the first quarter purchase order report, and first quarter capital project budget report, and first quarter budget report. Our finance folks have been very busy. And let's see, we've got meeting minutes from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force from October. And that brings us to Item 11A, Ordinance to Amend the Salary Schedule Minimum Wage. Ms. Livian?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Livian is at a conference tonight, and so I will be presenting this item on her behalf. This will be a very short presentation. Those of you that have been on the council for some time are familiar with the number of times we've had to do this. But basically, this is an ordinance to amend the salary schedule to reflect changes in minimum wage. Effective the first of the year, California minimum wage will change from $15 an hour to $15.50 for all employers. And so the city has a number of impacted classifications. The lighthouse cashier, intern, lighthouse dosing coordinator, recreation assistant 1, those are directly impacted. We also have some classifications that we are going to have to adjust to avoid compaction issues, and that's the recreation assistant 2, and the recreation program. And that's the recreation assistant two and the recreation program supervisor positions. This will have a minimal impact to the budget since our low, excuse me, lowest hourly rage rage rate, pardon me, is fifteen forty-five for positions that are recommended for a salary change. So I'm happy to take any questions, but that's all I have on this this evening. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Doesn't appear we have anyone in person or online, Mayor.
Council discussion? Motion?
Okay.
All right, we're going to we'll start with recommendation number one.
I think, Mayor, my my advice would be that you would request me to read the title and then what you can do on the remaining items is move the recommended action.
Okay, I'd request city attorney read the title of the ordinance and then I'll make a motion.
So yeah, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacific Grove amending the salary classification schedule to comply with the California minimum wage and to delete obsolete classifications.
Okay, um, let's, let's fix that title. There is no obsolete classifications to delete.
Well, that was the title I saw on the agenda.
I know. And so
recommended actions.
Can we, do we need to do anything to fix the title that you just read?
What needs to be done to fix it?
The title that says and to delete obsolete classifications. And there are no findings nor any actions deleting obsolete classifications in this ordinance.
Okay, well, then the title of the ordinance could end with the words minimum wage.
Okay.
I would do my motion. I would, I'd move that we strike the words after minimum wage in the ordinance as proposed. It'll settle then.
Well, you could combine that with also moving the other recommended actions in the agenda.
I thought I did.
You did. Right, I, I think you did. I got the other recommended covered. Uh, may we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Barry? Coletti?
Aye.
And Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero two.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance to approve an amendment to the current fiscal year operating capital budgets.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Livian. Uh, tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three operating and capital improvement budget. Next slide. Approximately four years ago, the city implemented encumbrance accounting, which places a hold on budgeted funds for city contracts by issuing a purchase order. Some of the contracts with encumbered funds that were budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two were not complete at year end, and the funds need to be carried forward to this current fiscal year. Along with contracts, there were also capital improvement projects and capital outlay purchases that were in progress at year end and need to be carried forward to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide, please. The combined carryforward total for purchase orders, projects and outlay expenses is approximately three point three million dollars. And revenues are approximately one point eight million. Additional amendments that are being proposed include additional funding for the museum roof repair project, legal services agreements, and the fire engine. And that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
I don't see anyone in person and no hands are raised online, sir.
Council discussion? Mayor Protem Emilio?
I just wanted to voice that I voted no on the additional one hundred thousand dollars be included via this budget amendment when it came after a meeting. So that hundred thousand I disagreed with. However, the rest of the items I do agree with.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm looking at the attachment, and it looks like we're going to carry forward eight hundred and five thousand base, eight hundred and six thousand for the fire and reconstruction down at the Corporation Yard. I did have a discussion with staff about this, and they are going to be recalculating that carryforward amount. Uh, this will come up again in an, in an agenda item. I think it's under twelve, but I am curious, Tori, did, were you able to look uh, look at that any further to see if this carryforward amount is the correct amount?
Councilmember Coletti to the mayor. I did, I was able to look at part of it, but I still will need to coordinate more with the Public Works Director to confirm that as well as the Public Works Department. We know that on the four hundred and, I think it's eighty-five or ninety-five thousand dollar contract for construction at the close of the fiscal year, only forty thousand dollars of that was expended, and there's still a significant amount to be expended in this year as well as I believe he cited potential electrical cost. I'm not sure if that is the final estimate that he has at this point. But in addition to those funds, there are also costs included there for potential technology adjustments and potential furnishings associated with the new site. And there could be just some additional general costs that are associated with leasing, maybe they're not necessarily a capital cost, but they're possibly leasing the temporary facilities that are included in that budget. So we are planning to take a look at that. And we will get back to the council on that number at the, at the when we produce the second quarter report or in the next time we come back with, whether it be in January or February.
Okay, that'd be great. It caught my eye because the adopted budget has it at seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And now we're going to amend it through this carryover that's shown here on this attachment to this agenda item. And the amended budget now is going to be one point five nine three million. I, I would like to see, and I know we've already discussed this, but I would like to see a list of, because right now, as far as I know, council has only authorized the contract for the electrical and then the construction work, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of around seven hundred and ninety thousand or somewhere like that. So to get to the one point five nine million, I would definitely like to see a list of, an itemized list of what all the costs will be for this project to meet this budget amendment that we're going to be approving. So thank you very much.
I had a question about some of these projects. Uh, a number are carried over, and are we in any jeopardy of losing any funding? For example, Measure X uh, funding? Do we, is there a deadline for finishing these capital projects that are, that are funded by grants?
I'd like to defer that.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would be happy to answer that question. We are in no jeopardy of losing any Measure X funding, SB one funding, or any of our grant funds. We are meeting every requirement that's associated with any agreement we have with the state, the county, or any of these grantors.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Following up on that point, not so much for grants, but for the contracts themselves. So these in capital improvement items and specifically typically have contracts associated with them that have a fixed term. For instance, I was talking about earlier, I was talking about the Public Works Reconstruction. That contract, at least as I read it this afternoon, expires in June of twenty twenty-three. How many of these items that we are carrying forward on have contracts that will potentially expire before the work is even completed or even perhaps even started? Is there a way we can maybe drill down? Because what I'm seeing on this, on this carryforward and then some of the first quarter CIP budget reports is there's very little that's actually been spent towards these particular projects. So if we haven't started, just based on the fact that we haven't, you know, we don't show any expenditures towards these projects, I'm worried that perhaps the contract due date, the termination date, might come up and we don't actually we don't, we can't continue with that, at that contracted amount, that negotiated amount, it could be, it could be higher. So is there any way staff could generate a list of the contract dates for the CIP projects that we're carrying forward on? And maybe give us an idea? Because I'm not very comfortable adding more CIP projects onto the queue, which we would be doing at the beginning of this next year if we aren't able to finish the ones we have currently uh, scheduled for funding. So it's important to know when the contracts are going to end, if there's any impact on what the contracts would have to be negotiated at. And I'm just wondering if staff could prepare a list for basically the ones that are under contract, when the due dates would be? And just food for thought. And Tori, do you have any thought on that? Does that sound reasonable or what are your thoughts?
Councilmember Coletti to the mayor. The city clerk does mention a list of contract expiration dates. We can work with her in Public Works just to confirm that. And that is going to also be input into our new records management system. So everyone will be receiving a tickler at the time a contract is associated to expire or close to expiring. But just for clarification, some of the contracts, uh, some of the projects may not have a contract issued for it, or there could be multiple vendors associated with a project, possibly one for design and one for construction. So while we're carrying forward the funds, a particular contract may not be associated with that, with some of the projects at this time.
Yeah, understood. That just the ones that are would be the ones that, and I know, for instance, there's a contract for the, the Lover's Point Pier that I, I think we actually had to extend in June. Maybe, Dan, do you have any, Mr. Go, do you have any update on that effort and whether you expect to make meaningful progress before that contract might come to an end?
Absolutely. We have made very meaningful progress on that project. We've received tentative plan sets, which we're in the process of reviewing and memo, a memo that really spells out an interim repair that can be made from the process of reviewing that. We'll be bringing that forth to city council for consideration at a near future meeting, probably after the beginning of the new year. I'd also like to elaborate on the fire reconstruction project at Public Works that runs through June of twenty twenty-three. You haven't seen anything expended on that project yet because it was twenty-six weeks for us to order the metal just for the building that's anticipated to come in next week or the week after Thanksgiving, and then they're going to begin construction right away. So then we'll have significant expenditures on that, and the construction will be rather quick on that type of project. We're managing these contracts. We understand the, the due dates and the aspects of all those. For example, Point Pino's Trail has a two-year monitoring program, so certain contracts with that are carried through and carried over. Hence why you're seeing these on multiple years, multiple budgets carried through. They're, they're a three-year project. So yes, we could generate a list and work with the Finance Department and the city clerk and provide that to the city council.
That'd be great, Mr. Go. I, I believe you're going to be, in the new year, you're going to be providing us with a CIP uh, status update or a progress report. Maybe that's a good time to bring that forward. So
we'd be more than happy to do that. We will do a look back from the previous year, and we could give an update on where we are with the current year's CIP. We'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we're ready for a motion. I, I would just note on page one seventeen of the document, the ordinance number is twenty-three dash triple X, or maybe getting anxious for the new year. Should be twenty-two. Here, let's see, we need
There's a couple of things, Your Honor.
Yeah, several things, want to sort it out for us.
Okay, I would move that we approve an amendment to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three operating and capital improvement budget first.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. And then I would request that the city attorney read the title of the ordinance.
I'll second that as well.
All right, perhaps I could just read that now. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacific Grove amending the approved budget for fiscal year FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and let's do a vote on the first.
Okay, sure.
May we have a vote on number one, approve the amendment?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti? And Padiri?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero two. Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson absent.
And I would make a motion that we, the recommended actions three, four, and five, we approve those.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti? And Padiri?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero two as to items three, four, and five.
Moving on to item eleven C, permanent local housing allocation. Ms. Wyatt, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight to present the permanent local housing allocation grant. And I do have a PowerPoint, so hopefully that will be loaded shortly to give you some slides that have some good information about the grant. Okay, the next slide is the city council action that I'll be asking for tonight, which is to approve a resolution authorizing an application to the state HCD for PLHA funding. Approve the five-year plan and its amendment. And approve that we submit this to the state. So the PLHA grant is an interesting grant. It's one of the newer grants from the state for housing. As you all know, redevelopment was eliminated and the state has been looking for ways to help us with housing funding. So PLHA is done in five-year increments. The great thing about PLHA is that this is an ongoing grant, so we will see this funding continue in perpetuity, which is fantastic. So it's something we can really plan and count on. However, it is a relatively new grant, and so over this, these are the funding allocations that you see. And just to let you know, these funds come in through the state, through the SB two jobs and housing funds. So it's based on revenues that come in for housing transactions. There's a seventy-five dollar fee. So the state doesn't know how much funding we're going to get until the end of the year. Then they come out with a notice of funding availability for each city detailing how much funding we're going to get. And then we, they, they put out a notice of funding availability and then a deadline for grants to be submitted. This year, the deadline is November thirtieth. So we're on time with the grant, and the first fiscal year was a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. We do, we are allowed administrative fees. The second year was larger based on revenues from home sales. And this fiscal year is a hundred and eighty-eight, two thousand, two hundred and seven. So that is what you're seeing. And then the last two years, we don't know the whole allocation yet. And you'll see there's a total of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand in the staff report. Those are estimated based on these revenues. Those are estimated based on these revenues. So right now, that's just an estimate. Next slide. So we, the original five-year plan was. Based, that was approved by the city council for the first two fiscal years. Were to use the revenues for homeless assistance. And then also the last three years was originally going to be for hopefully a regional housing trust fund. Unfortunately, we tried working with the other partners in the county and the county itself. And the county just decided to go on their own. With a trust fund, so it's just a county trust fund, not a regional trust fund. Therefore, we need to amend our five-year plan. And to. In order to figure out, how can we spend this money, make an impact? Because if we had done a trust fund, we were looking at housing development and developing units. And I I've been here a little over a year now and I heard from Don Murphy, our. Planning Commissioner, that there were units available at Forest Hill. That were dedicated in two thousand and seven. Through some conditions of approval for some development on that property. And there are two units that have never been filled, that are dedicated to affordable housing for seniors at Forest Hill. So I've been in discussions with Forest Hill about utilizing these units. And in the meantime, I've been in contact with the state to try to determine if it's possible to use PLHA. To pay for the rental assistance. To put people, two people into these units because they are already built. And just to let you know, right now, we're up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand per unit. To develop a new unit through affordable housing. So the fact that we have these units there and they're empty. And we have a chance to fill it utilizing these funds. This is all great news and a really great way to utilize these funds. So. In general, we'll be applying for rental assistance for seniors. But this is my hope that we'll be able to negotiate with Forest Hill. And they are in the process of changing ownership right now. However, the condition of approval. That was established, I believe, in two thousand and seven. That these terms and conditions are in perpetuity. And it is the intention of the city council and the permit to bind all future owners and possessors of the subject property. To the terms and conditions. And condition number fifteen is regarding these two units. So that is. How we propose to submit the application with the intent for future negotiations with Forest Hill and the new owners. To try to fill these units. For two seniors. So. That is the crux of the amendment, what we're doing and how to move forward with the grant. Next slide. The five-year plan amendment continued. Is we are only amending years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And. Again, we originally thought we were going to be able to apply for a regional housing trust fund that fell through. So now we want to make an impact in our community. That's all I have for my presentation and I will take any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
No in-person public comment. We do have one caller online, Daniel Miller.
Welcome.
Just a sec. Yeah, the report's in error. Forest Hill Manor had those two units that were set aside. They gave money in lieu of those two units to the city to help with the building of the senior housing down at Lover's Point. So that no longer exists. And so. Obviously, an error was made. There needs to be follow-up to what happens after agreements are made. And I got no idea how that happened, but this again is the problem with. Lack of historical knowledge in the city, especially in the housing department and in planning and everywhere else. So. Please be a little more careful in the future because not everybody knew this, but it should have been found with a little bit of investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council discussion on this item. Councilmember Padori.
Yes, thank you. Could you just briefly comment on what the caller had asked for? Is there other stipulations to the Forest Hill Manor? That we should be aware of?
Councilmember Padori through the mayor. As far as I know, and what I've reviewed through the conditions of approval, that. Remains and I have on annual monitoring, these units have been monitored. I have record from staff that they have. Continually kept negotiations going for these two units. So I have all of that here.
Okay, thank you. The I actually had the general questions around this. So this local housing trust fund. Which was established and now it's disbanded. What are other cities doing? So other cities obviously in express an intent to participate, correct?
Councilmember Padori, that is correct. And. Actually, recently, we found that other. Communities had not applied for their funding and so through some discussions. The county is assisting other communities that have forgotten to apply for the first two years or didn't know about it. So you, the program allows for rental assistance, housing development. Those types of programs, it's really trying to create units or opportunity to house lower-income individuals.
Okay, so it seems like they're they're working towards. Some local kind of issues related to homelessness. Well, that's where they're allocating this funding, correct?
Councilmember Padori, some people may be helping with homeless assistance, but also low-income housing. Opportunities and development. So that can be anywhere. The state really is focused on. Sixty percent area median income and below. And if we were to utilize these funds to subsidize. These units specifically for Forest Hill, we would need to. Help people at the thirty percent of the area median income. So very low, very low income.
And will will this contribute to the RENA numbers?
It. May, it will not because these units were created some time ago. They were created in two thousand and seven.
Okay, and is, is from my understanding, like, sorry, the. Seems like this is going to come, come, come back up in twenty twenty-four again, the PLHA. It's a five-year cycle, so it's going to come back and. So is the intent that we need to utilize all these funds before the end of the five-year mark?
The councilmember Padori, yes, we would like to utilize the funds within the timeframe of the grant. So we can apply and then we would have hopefully like. At least one year to spend, more than one year to spend the funding, but the sooner we spend it, the better.
Yeah, in general, I'm supportive of this, whether we need to allocate it to Forest Hill Manor or otherwise. I think it needs to go into the general bucket of housing and low-income housing, so I'm supportive. Thank you.
Mayor Procham Emilio.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Anastasia, the. In my understanding, whether it's two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, these two units have been empty. Correct? And if one of our goals is to increase affordable housing, especially with seniors. I I'm, I would approve this project. I'm for this project.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, okay, so. The Anastasia, the these two units at the Forest Hill Manor. The two affordable units. I'm. I'm, I guess I'm surmising that these two units were. Created as part of conditions of approval of the use permit. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, you are correct.
Okay, so we, we, as part of that project, and that was a big project. The developer property owner went ahead and created two affordable units. As a condition of the use permit. But they have been unoccupied since two thousand and seven?
Councilmember Coletti, that's correct. One of the issues with. These units is that. People who are able to qualify under the, right now, currently, they're for low-income, eighty percent area median income and below. Are unable to pay the fees associated. With living in assisted living. So the fees. Are have, are too much, so. There, they cover the costs, the costs to live there. So currently, under the conditions that are there. It would cost a low-income resident. One thousand five hundred and ninety-three for the rent. And then additional one thousand two hundred and sixty for the services and you have to have the services in those units. It was a great idea. Unfortunately, people can't afford both at that income level. So I've been in negotiations with the state about paying. The fee with PLHA because this is such a interesting funding source and it's new. And they were in agreement that. This could be done. And so all in all, but we will have to lower, we'll have to subsidize that rent for a lower-income individual. But yes, they've been empty, so all that time, not once rented out.
Okay, so this is interesting. The. What category, I think there's four. Is this low or is this very low income that we're going to try to create? Or what was the actual condition of the use permit? Or did they require a specific category of affordable? Housing be created?
Right, the use permit, condition fifteen. And I just want you to know, I did meet with Sarah Era, who's, who was the executive director. She just moved on and they have a new director. Interim director there now, Tamara Solari. But condition fifteen was that they would be. The rent would be based on the city's HUD low-income guidelines, which is eighty percent AMI and below. In order to utilize the state PLHA funding. It would be thirty percent AMI to meet state guidelines, but we can cover the difference. And meet the guidelines for the thirty percent AMI utilizing PLHA.
Okay, so if we got credit for the RENA, our RENA allocation. What category did we get credit for if they've never been rented out?
RENA is based on building permits.
Understood, but it go into a specific, one of the four buckets. Did we get credit for low or did we get credit for very low? Or just, was it just market rate housing that we got credit for?
That would have been based on the two thousand and seven submittal to the state.
Yeah.
And it may not have been that detailed at the time. From twenty ten onward, the annual performance report to the state has required more and more detail. And so I can't speak to if we got credit in two thousand and seven. When these units were constructed.
Okay, so we're not even sure if it got counted as a low-income housing, just based on how RENA numbers were calculated that particular time?
That that would.
It might be worth a follow-up just to see if we can get some, you know, get some kind of credit for the fact that it would be now going towards. Affordable housing where maybe in the past it was more generic. I don't know, but. I'm supportive of this, obviously, having two units sent empty because. They can't afford to basically get in the door is, it doesn't help anybody. But I think we should follow up on this whole in lieu of. And if they were unoccupied, I could see why maybe that would be. Could possibly be true. If they were just sitting empty, maybe they went, went ahead and tried to. To get in lieu monies. Targeted towards the Vista Point Apartments, but why they would leave them empty wouldn't make much sense either. So if we could follow up on that, that would be good because I'm. Mr. Miller has a lot of, a lot of history with that particular project, the the Forest Hill Manor. So if. If there was some kind of. A deal worked out where these two units. Were set aside for affordable, but then they were transferred over to the Vista Point Apartments. That'd be good to know. So those are my comments. Yeah.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, I'm familiar with what is why it speaks of the prior housing manager had the struggle that she. Described that the problem, the reason why they were empty was you had this conundrum. Because those who could be qualified to live there couldn't afford. To pay for the services that were required to live in the building and that's been the challenge and there was no way. Until very recently, to have a funding source for that. This has. Been a turn of events and that's why we're able to move forward. But I remember. Ms. Schaefer working on this for some time. And and keeping me apprised of trying to figure out a way to solve it. So that that's my understanding of the situation. Which is consistent with what Mrs. Ms. Wyatt has presented. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and that's my understanding of it now as well. And I do understand why this money would be used to 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 get people in. But it seems like Mr. Miller is saying that even before Ms. Schaefer was even here. Some of the, there was an in lieu arrangement to use those two apartments to be transferred down to Vista Point. And if that's true, we should, and that would be easily. We could easily check that just based on the funding that happened, occurred with the Vista Point Apartments, which I think was. Prior to two thousand and seven. Anyway, it's an interesting point, but I am willing to support this.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Could you put up slide number five? Starting at the bottom bullet, the city's first two years allocation is dedicated to assist with regional homeless shelters. Our homeless shelter services. Has that money been dispersed yet? Or received?
Mayor, I did pull a report from, I've worked with our finance department. And Community Human Services since two thousand and nineteen has received seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I believe these funds are eligible for reimbursement through the PLHA funding.
So in other words. The, okay, you said the first two years. I'm trying to follow the money. So the first two years, one hundred and nineteen and one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And. Together, that's about three hundred thousand. That we could send to CHS and then apply for reimbursement? Is is my understanding correct?
You are correct, Mayor.
So. Let's do that. Is there any obstacle? I'm sure. Community Human Services would be able to use that amount of money very easily to help as the only women and children's shelter on the peninsula.
Mr. Mayor, we'll work on a check.
Okay.
Shortly.
And then. The, the, next to the last bullet. You're proposing to use the the other, the remaining funding, which I'm guessing is about four hundred thousand dollars. For rental assistance for very low-income seniors. I'm not sure why you're singling out, well, I can guess why you're singling out seniors. But. If there aren't enough. Low-income seniors, I would think we just. Have have low-income families. And subsidize them. So what would it take to do this? Is this a program that we would? Or you would set up with United Way? To to receive applications and and vet and administer the rental assistance program? How would that? Get kicked off?
Mayor, we. Mayor, we, the rental assistance that's been occurring through United Way has been through a federal, federal funds that pass through the state to our county. And these funds would come directly to the city, so we would administer it here within our department locally.
So you do, um, you would, uh, do a call out to people to apply for this program and forms, and it would come to you, your staff, your department to handle?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure we're going to approve this. Um, how soon could that start?
We could, Ma- Mayor, we could start the program. Um, what I I've considered how we can do this fairly because there's always more need than there are funds. Uh, especially if we were, first I would try to negotiate what we can with Forest Hill since those two units are built, ready to go. There's no displacement of other residents. Um, and these funds can be used for other than seniors. We're completing the application for, um, very low income assisting people preventing homelessness. Um, so first, if the will of the council is to move forward with this plan, we would negotiate with Forest Hill if we're able to negotiate a certain amount of money. Obviously, that would be, hopefully in perpetuity, we would be able to su- sustain people in those units as long as possible. Um, I would like to take as many applications up to a certain amount, um, first come, first served, that meet the qualifications, uh, in condition fifteen, is it condition fifteen here? Um, so, because there are some conditions on the type of resident that could get in. And then I would recommend we do a lottery for the two residents because it would be hard to just do first come, first served. We need to ensure everybody meets all of the qualifications and guidelines. And then we could, those that do meet up to a certain number, maybe we take in thirty applications. And once we've qualified third, or maybe we take in fifty applications and we qualify thirty, we do a drawing for the two. Um, that could be a fair way to get two residents in.
And, and then, okay, beyond those two units?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, if.
Then what happens?
It depends on our negotiations and how much funding we have left. So then we could assist other people in our community.
But it sounds like we have hundreds of thousands of dollars to spend, so I hope that's not just two units, but maybe it is. Um, um, my other question is, um, we talked about, a council talked about the homeless, the point, point in time survey, it was twenty-nine homeless. Could some of this money be used to contact, um, the homeless in Pacific Grove and find out what kind of services that they need to possibly transition out of homelessness? Um, is that possible?
Mayor, uh, if we look at the NOFA, this funding is really dedicated to housing development or rental assistance. What you're talking about sounds to me like outreach and some case management to assist those people that are in need. And those would be different funds, and I would recommend we discuss that with the Continuum of Care or Coalition of Homeless Services Providers to assist with that outreach.
Okay, under- understood. This isn't the right funding for that, but I, I hope that, uh, we see in the future that we see some effort to contact, uh, our homeless and to, um, find out what services they, they need to literally get on their feet, back on their feet. So, um, Council, Councilmember Smith?
I, I was ready to make a motion to approve the recommended action, seven.
Okay.
There it is.
Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Coletti.
There was something I had written down. I forgot to ask, um, why did the county back out? I mean, so I'm kind of concerned, you know, one of the big, uh, hopes was is that we could develop a regional housing, you know, program that could maybe leverage uh, things a little better than the individual jurisdiction could. And so I'm kind of wondering why the county backed out of this particular deal and what it might mean for future regional housing efforts.
Councilmember Coletti, uh, while we were in discussions and it, for couple of years on this, it took qua- it would have taken, in order to apply for the Regional Housing Trust Fund, we needed five jurisdictions to be a part of the trust fund. And we really needed the population of the city of Salinas in order to make the threshold for the grant application. And Salinas backed out. They just weren't able to do it. They're very impacted right now with homeless funding. We're all impacted with a lot of different state requirements and they backed out and that basically made it impossible for us to apply as a region.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Pink?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
And Pedri?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero two. Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson absent.
Item, uh, twelve A, fourth quarter budget report and preliminary fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two update. Ms. Hannah?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and members of the public. The item that I have before you is the fourth quarter budget report and the preliminary fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two financial update. To give you some background, the city closes its books on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And key revenues are received after June thirtieth, such as COT sales passing, some franchise passing. This is part of the reason for the delay uh, in providing this update. Typically, we provide it in October. However, the finance staff has had several significant vacancies over the last few months. And at times being down to just me and two people, we're pleased that we're back up to almost full staffing. But, um, that's part of the reason for the delay. Our independent audit was scheduled from October seventeenth to the twenty-first. So we feel that these numbers are fairly good. I don't anticipate any major changes. Um, we might just have some differences in final presentation for a new accounting announcement. Just at a very high level, um, the information and details are included within your agenda package for most of these items. Um, as a recap, when we adopted the budget, we were expecting twenty-six point eight million dollars in revenues and twenty-six point seven million dollars in expenditures. We were expecting to come ahead by a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. When we amended the budget, we had seen significant revenue performance, and at mid-year, we increased our revenues by one point eight million dollars. This was primarily due to, uh, recognition of some of the ARPA transferred revenue. Um, property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, which also showed significant increases in performance. Um, expenditures were also increased at, at mid-year by about one point three million. Some of those were ARPA, ARPA expenditures and others, including some carryforward costs and increased legal costs as well as other council priorities. At that point, we were planning to, in the year, with a net difference of seven hundred and eighteen thousand or just over ten million. Well, the revenue still continued to perform, um, outperform the original projected numbers by about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, part of this was due to an increase in water entitlement sales. But again, part of it was also due to increase in transient occupancy tax and sales tax revenues in the last half of the fiscal year. And looking at operating expenses, you'll see a three hundred, there will be a three hundred thousand dollar reduction um, related to building contract services. They're receiving throughout some of the other departments as well as some carryforwards. The capital improvement and capital outlay primarily relate to carryforwards associated with ARPA-funded projects. And transfers out are increased, and that primarily reflects the, um, increased water entitlement sales that are going to be forwarded to the local water project. So we're ending the year with an estimated, uh, twelve million dollars in available fund balance. So how does that look in relation to our reserve target? When we take into consideration the general fund carryforwards that Ms. Pope presented earlier tonight, that would leave us with an estimated ending operating fund balance of ten point five million dollars. The slide also shows how our reserve target is calculated using operating expenses and debt service and the items that were proposed for carryforward. We'd be looking at thirty-five percent of twenty-nine million dollars. So when we look at that number, our minimum policy limit is, is just over ten million dollars. So we've come out three hundred and seventy-six thousand to the better. And if we're looking to appropriate those additional funds at mid-year or, um, after the five-year forecast, that could be an option, or it could also be included in the proposed budget as additional items. This is just a, a quick historical perspective of how, um, the fund balance and the general fund has changed. You can see that we're above our reserve target for this year. And also a reminder that you can see that while our fund balance has changed, it is related to our operating expenditures and debt service. So each time those numbers increase, so will our reserve requirement. In relation to revenues, um, I have separate slides for property tax, COT tax and sales tax. But just touching on some of the larger changes in abstinence, license permits, three hundred thousand dollars of that again is related to a large, um, building project where we are expecting fees to come in this year that we're going to need to adjust for our projections for next year to receive those. Um, as well as, uh, some of that is related to, to parts, to increased charges for services. However, charges for services also reflecting increased parking meter revenue as well as, um, recreation fees, uh, recovering from the pandemic as well. Interest, rents, and concessions. That adjustment is primarily related difference, it's primarily related to an accounting, uh, type entry that we have to do at year end. It's an adjustment that's related to the value of our investment portfolio. It has nothing to do with a cash amount, but just more of an accounting entry. And if you take that number and adjust it, the ending fiscal year revenues would be three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, just above the projected amount. The transfer ends are two hundred and ninety-two thousand below the projection. This change is related to, um, ARPA funds. We can only transfer in money for ARPA that correlate to the actual ARPA expenditures. So at each end of the quarter, we transfer in matching funds. And because we do have some carryforwards, these will be brought into the next fiscal year, and we weren't able to take, take, take them into this fiscal year's general fund budget. These new, um, trends, that these monies will now all remain, as well as the expenditures within the, the separate ARPA fund. Just to share with you some property tax trends. Um, property tax has continually been strong. It was not impacted at all by the pandemic. In fact, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, um, the city had its, its largest increase, uh, at least in, within this slide as far as property tax revenue. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, it increased by four point seven percent for three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, just below the prior five-year average. Sales and use tax, sales and use tax, um, over some of the years have fluctuated due to timing difference. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, it was impacted some by the pandemic. But as you can see from the chart, it has rebounded stronger than ever, um, with significant increase that we've seen in the third and fourth quarters. All, um, all exceeding the prior, prior quarters during that same last half of the year. Francied occupancy tax, this shows the distribution of short-term rentals as well as, um, commercial properties. Both of them have rebounded, as you can see in fiscal years nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one. Uh, you can see some of the effects of the pandemic on those revenues. And you can see at this point, commercial property tax revenues has exceeded the highest point in this chart, and also short-term rentals have been restored to close to their, their normal levels that were in nineteen, twenty. We had anticipated there may be some reductions due to, um, due to some of the changes in density adjustments, as well as the other, as the other tax initiatives. To share with you general fund expenditures, I'm not going to go into all of the, the details. They are included in the packet, but some of the larger ones, uh, larger changes is in city council budget. We were anticipating the election costs would come in, uh, stronger, so it's coming in under budget. And you can see that it's also higher than the prior year. In finance and information technology, both departments have some significant vacancies. However, because of that in information technology, uh, there's probably a carryforward of approximately eighty thousand dollars related to the new, um, it, it would be related to the new, I, I believe it's the new document management system and the GIS master plan, as well as the associated licenses. Community development, you'll see that it's, it's under budget by about four hundred and ninety-four thousand because the building contract services correlate with some of the rec- revenues associated with the new development. You'll see that they, those have not been expended. They've also had some salary savings as well as some contract savings associated with, um, anticipated grant expenditures. Capital outlay project. Again, um, correlating reduction primarily, um, in relation to ARPA. And transfers have increased over the budget amount, and this again is because of water entitlement sales came in so strong this year. The council had committed, um, oh, had committed the complete amount to the local water project. And there was also one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in funds that was anticipated to come in this year. This will be your twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, that actually came in, in the last fiscal year. Salary and benefits represents the largest portion of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget at fifty-one percent. A couple of, uh, notes to point out is that, um, when looking at that, was when looking at the graph, you can see that the COVID nineteen reductions in salaries in fiscal year nineteen, twenty, the salary and benefits were originally ten million, and that was the base salary and benefit. The unfunded liability is just above that at two point five million. But when you look to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, when we're back at full staffing, uh, salaries increased close to, uh, three hundred thousand dollars or two point nine percent over the two years. And the cost, unfortunately, of the unfunded liability increased by close to eight hundred thousand dollars. The enterprise fund of special interest, we've been watching the local water project. Um, this year, it came out ahead by three hundred thousand dollars. But a significant amount of that was due to the local, uh, to the transfer of water entitlement sales. If we had not transferred the water entitlement sales, it would be operating at a deficit of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, a council subcommittee was formed to review any potential changes to the golf course agreement, which may assist in, um, making the net operating difference slightly different. However, that could also be additional subsidies with water entitlement sales. Um, the committee is still working on that. The estimated ending fund balance is two hundred and sixty-two thousand. For all other funds, the revenues have exceeded expenditures. Another strong year for the cemetery, coming ahead at three hundred and eight thousand dollars, with an estimated available fund balance of six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. The sewer fund, revenues in excess of expenditures. Some of that is related to carryforwards on significant projects. Some of that is related to carryforwards on significant projects. While revenues are also set at a certain rate to cover capital improvements over a ten-year period. The net difference was one point two million with six point three million estimated ending fund balance. And the golf course came ahead this year by a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Part of the reason was a one-time payment associated with percentage-based rent. This is something that the city has never received. And this amount was close to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And that brings the preliminary estimated available fund balance for the golf course to a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Additional opportunities for for talking about financial items and receiving information in addition to the quarterly reports and the monthly core revenue report and check register. You have the independent auditor auditor's report anticipated to be presented in January. The five-year forecast, which assists in setting the stage for the proposed budget is planned to be provided in January and February. A mid-year update on the first six months of this fiscal year is anticipated to be read in in February. And the proposed budget workshop and presentation is anticipated to be provided in May and June. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Do you have any public comment?
I see no one in person or online, Mayor.
Council discussion? This is a receive the report, a lot of information, Councilmember Pedory.
Yeah, I just had a clarification. The interest rents and concessions. There was a statement here stating that it was the preliminary reductions were due to reduction in the fair market value of the investment portfolio by two fifty-seven thousand. Is is this like an ongoing exercise where we calculate the fair market value at the end of year? And then essentially adjust the budget accordingly?
Yes, it is. It isn't a passion to me, but it is something that is required that we do it each year. And when we calculate the ending fund balance, it is considered part of that. We typically don't see this big of a swing. But because of some of the challenges within investment returns, that is an entry that we were required to to book. And it it is, it is a surprising amount. It was a significant amount.
And what is the date? Like, is it June thirtieth?
We look at it as of June thirtieth. We look at the value of the investment portfolio as well as we receive a factor from the local agency investment fund that tells us what we should adjust our cash value for our our late our local agency fund investments.
And just we'll follow up question there says as our, so right now we showed a we have a surplus of money by three fifty-six thousand, which is going to be adjusted, right? So this this amount is determined by the budget and the reserve that we have along with that June thirtieth date. Is that accurate?
The three fifty-six thousand is the unassigned fund balance is determined by that amount. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I I want to follow up. Actually, I didn't follow the explanation of why interest rents and concessions went down. Fair market value of what?
The investment portfolio. It's
I'm sorry, the investment portfolio?
Yes, all of our investments, the city investments and CDs and in and in U.S. frejries. We receive
Okay.
estimate on our brokerage account.
Okay. All right. I understand that. And rents and concessions, could you explain the difference? There we have properties that we have leases on. Is that rent?
Yes, properties in the general fund that we have leases on include and and I and I need help from Ms. Pope. She handles our leases. But I will say it has to do with the beach house and a couple of other properties that that we have as well as facility leases, facility, facility rental leases.
Okay. And and how about rents? How how have they been going?
Our rents?
We rent out the Point Pinos Grill, the Beach House, the Lover's Point Grill. Oh, it's Poets Perch goes to the library fund. The the leases that we have to on the on the restaurants, how that revenue fares, did that go down?
Um, I I believe it went up. Hold on just one moment. I may have that number in hand. Let me see.
I'll just let you know, I don't, maybe I'm the only one, but I'm having a little difficulty understanding understanding you.
No, you're not the only one.
Yeah, I don't know whether it's your microphone or the
Okay, I'm, can you hear me now? Okay?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, just let me know if I'm speaking too loud. But they have performed in excess of, I'm looking at at the majority of them have looked like they have performed in excess from the prior year. When I look at the amount, I would say that when looking at the net difference, I am seeing probably around at least a twenty thousand dollar increase, but I'm just, I'm looking at it from a very high level. We can provide that information to you at mid-year if you'd like.
Yeah, I I definitely am interested in how our city leases are are doing in terms of revenue. Absolutely. I I'll just make some general comments. Obviously, this is a very strong financial picture. I'm, I know people used to throw around the B word bankruptcy a few years ago. I don't think we were ever, recent memory ever close to that. And maybe people still don't realize, but we have, I think, a pretty solid financial picture here as you've just described. So thank you for that. Mayor Potem Melio.
Yes, thank you, Tori. You answered some of my questions earlier. And I appreciate the thoroughness of this report and thank you to your your finance crew also that helped you with this report. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tori, I know this I'm following up here on the leases and rents performance. You provided counsel, it may have been, I'm thinking December of twenty twenty. You provided a nice report of basically what we are receiving as far as our various leases and rents. And maybe we could, you mentioned bringing back that, maybe we could repeat that because I found it very helpful when I first came onto council and I'd like to see that again. I'm going to ping on you. We talked about getting a our auditor to look at our Airbnb agreement. I'm, this, is this the year?
Uh, yes, this, Councilmember Coletti, this is the year. They have actually made contact with Airbnb. They are in the process of auditing them.
Super. Thank you very much. And as as long as we're talking about TOT and Measure M was brought up earlier. I will note as Tori has, Ms. Hannah has presented, TOT looks stronger than ever. And some of the forecasted recovery in the commercial market by reducing the residential market looks to be happening. So numbers, all the numbers look really good on that front. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report, Tori. I think that we're, what we're seeing here with this report is that a healthy financial overall picture of the city, which is great. I think, and it's been that way for for some time now, and that's a great thing that not all cities share with us. I I think that what we're seeing is pension costs is kind of like our the negative side of things with the rising rates and all that and and the and the changing rate versus robust property tax, obviously, TOT and other tax revenues. So we're kind of, there's a counter counterbalance between these rising costs that are inevitable at this point and that we're going to face. And also, however, though, on the on the plus side, these great tax revenues that we have, these strong, robust tax revenues. So I think that's the solution is we just got to keep as we pay these costs down, we have to continue to focus on these sources of revenue and but I based on the the figures that I saw in the report, I think that we're striking that balance at this time and we just got to continue to be vigilant to do that. Thank you.
All right, that is receive the report. So thank you very much. We're now on to twelve B, which is the former eight A, the workers, excuse me, eight F, which the title is first quarter twenty-two, twenty-three workers' compensation report. As Ms. Cray, oh, there she is. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and community members. Madri Cray, Finance and Risk Manager for Admin Services Director. My item is the first quarter workers' compensation statistics report for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. This quarter actually saw a reduction in claims when compared to last year at the same time of twenty-four claims. So we're headed in a good trend for this new fiscal year. And I have any, if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
I see no in person or hands raised online.
Well, I was the one that pulled this, so I'll just ask straight away, we'll start with the big picture. And so what's your sense of how we're doing in terms of workplace safety, given these results?
I think our numbers look good. I would say the majority of our claims in this quarter are COVID-related, which are mostly report only. And at this point, they're pretty inevitable, but they are trending down in terms of actual injuries. That has been much reduced. I think that finally in this last year, we're able to enlist all of these trainings that we're getting provided by CJPIA without no additional cost. And I think it's helping our employees just be more cognizant, be more self-aware. They're able to notice hazards and then mitigate mitigate those hazards before an injury occurs. And so I think that we're on a great path. I'm excited for what this next year is going to show for us. We have additional trainings that are still provided for us from CJPIA that we're going to be implementing. And all the tools that we can give to our employees helps that, including our safety program.
Okay, and what about the number of open claims? Is that seems to be the same year after year?
That is pretty much the same. A lot of those are actually very old claims. And, you know, we may have an opportunity in the future to, you know, settle out those claims. They kind of sit there. They have future medical tied to them. I mean, these are some that are decades old, to be honest with you. And so the future medical just kind of handles any type of doctor appointment or medical that they are dealing with for that original claim. It wasn't something that we wanted to do anytime in the last couple of years, but perhaps in the future we can work on getting those closed and off of our books. But that's why they remain open and most of them are really from many, many years ago. Nothing really new that's sitting out there. Most of our new claims get taken care of and closed pretty straight away.
Well, to that, I guess my reaction is perhaps a discussion with CJPIA about the open claims and and also to understand how do we compare with with similar agencies. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in on on the topic of open claims, we can certainly pursue that with CJPIA. I just want to make sure council would have the appetite for what would inevitably be the the result. We could have that conversation. There's a way you close those out. You just pay for them and basically depending on the claim and the future medical, it can be substantial. A lot of these cases stay open because the way the workers' comp system is established in the state, it allows for future medical care. And if, and so that's that's a benefit provided to the injured worker. If you want to take that off your books, you you have to hedge for the worst potential situation that that could arise. And some of these people have, you know, obviously long anticipated lifespans. So something that costs you a small amount of money every few years, you might end up paying hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's an exaggeration. That's probably the worst case scenario. But if there is an appetite for that, we could tally up an estimate on a lot of these, but it would probably be very high. And I don't know if it'd be the, you know, considering everything the city is trying to accomplish, if that would be what you'd want to use, because you'd have to pull it from your unprogrammed reserve, obviously. If you want to do that, we can certainly pursue that. I just want to throw that out there as a cautionary tale. Thank you.
And if I may add, some of the open claims may be outside of our, outside of our self-insured retention limit. So they may have moved into our excess carrier, but even though they are open, our excess carrier may be paying for some of the costs associated with that claim.
All right. If no further discussion, thank you very much. We'll now move on to former item eight A, the check register. And Ms. Cray, you're up again.
I am. I'm, this is our check register for this last month for October. If any questions you may have, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Public comment on this item?
I see no in person or online.
Okay, and council discussion, Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I did pull this. Councilmember Lect Beck asked me to do this before the meeting. She had some ongoing questions regarding the cost of water, potable water at our parks. And I was hoping maybe Dan Go and I could have a brief discussion about this. There there are some charges, for instance, I'll just start the highest and then work down. For instance, Berwick Park, we're showing a thirty-two thousand dollar bill for Cal-Am. Jewel Park, fourteen thousand, I'm rounding up, by the way. Ocean View Irrigation, I'm assuming this is you know, along from seventeenth over to Esplanade. Twelve thousand dollars. Piedmont, Arnett Park, seven thousand dollars. So we're we're spending a considerable amount of money for potable water irrigation. And I think, so first off, the good news is we have a purple pipe project in the pipeline, haha, that we might be able to reduce some of our potable water expenses by using reclaimed water from the water project. But your, I'd like to get Dan, your your feedback on some of these costs, Mr. Go. I know we're coming out of the dry season. And these costs, I believe you investigated previously as, you know, as far as any timers that might need to be adjusted or or whatnot. But are we just going to keep expecting these kind of costs for irrigating these parks? You know, well over, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars in just this one check register report. Now that may span a couple of months. So maybe just give us some thoughts on these costs. Are they going to be? You know, are we going to expect to keep paying these and is there any kind of audit that we might consider? is there any kind of audit that we might consider performing to see if we can reduce them?
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor. Unfortunately, the cost of potable water on the Monterey Peninsula and the central coast in the Cal Am district is very expensive. As many of you know, and the homeowners of Pacific Grove and the Monterey Peninsula know, these are large expansive turf areas that require irrigation if we want to maintain them as oceanfront parks with green grass. If it's the direction of the city council to significantly reduce the water on these parks to limit the application of that water and brown out the parks, that's something we can definitely do. We can minimize our irrigation, but in order for us to keep these parks vibrant and green and useful for our special events, our picnickers, our outdoor activities that are used on these oceanfront parks. This is the cost of water to irrigate them. We do not over irrigate. Our water, our parks are not overly saturated by any means. We have automatic timers set with them that have rain sensors hooked into them. So even if we get heavy fog, those percentages are lowered on those automatic timers. That's my explanation. It's the cost of irrigating these parks.
Okay, well, and that's fair enough. I mean, we're getting a bill and we've got to pay it, but I'm I'm thinking, is there any kind of audit or any kind of? Have have you you mentioned there's sensors on on the irrigation systems, the irrigation controllers? Is that true for all of these parks? Or is it just maybe one or two?
Yes, sir. That's true. For any turf area, we have about four years ago, we initiated, four years, maybe five, we initiated a program with Cal Am Water, and we went through and added all of those centers as part of a reduction program to all of our automated clocks. So yes, if it's got turf, it's got those sensors.
Well, okay, I, I'm gonna
Can may I, may I add something else to this, please?
Sure, of course.
Additionally, you know, it's not just the cost of the water. There's fees associated with just having the bill. So even if we turned off the irrigation at the parks, these are larger meters. Like, for instance, at Lover's Point, it's a two-inch meter, Caledonian Park's two-inch meter. I believe Berwick's the same way. There's costs associated with just having those meters in the ground and fees and taxes associated with those meters that equate a fairly substantial amount of money just to be able to have the service available. So regardless if we're even running water through those meters, there's still costs associated with having that meter in the ground.
No, absolutely. And go ahead, finish up if you'd like.
I'm just going to reiterate, it's, I think the Monterey Peninsula, Central Coast, Cal Am Water is some of the most expensive in the nation. And I I know that for a fact, as we've been doing research with the local water project.
Yeah, exactly. And that kind of raised the point, the cost of water itself, the water usage charge. It's actually, it's fairly reasonable. It's about two and a half cents a gallon, which is less than what we, you know, what it costs to produce even the non-potable water. But when you do add in meter fees, and if you have large meters, you know, that could be several hundred dollars a month just to pay for the meter. I understand that. But what we do have control over, we don't have control over the fees. We don't have, you know, which go towards all sorts of things, including the water district, et cetera, et cetera. We do have control over usage, and I'm just thinking if there is a possibility to maybe partner with Cal Am to do an audit. Because this is, you know, it's a lot of money, hundred thousand dollars for a couple of months worth of water is is not is not cheap. So this is something I think Debbie or Councilmember elect Beck is going to want to take up. And she asked me to pull this and and speak to it. It is something that interests me. And I think we just have to keep it in the back of our mind that maybe we do want to work towards getting an audit on our water use as we work towards going towards using recycled water for some of our areas. Thank you.
Absolutely. We are coming into the winter month, so our clocks are all shut down. And going into spring, we will make sure that the systems are one hundred percent operational and as efficient as possible.
Yeah, I'm along those lines. I just look at the the top five. And I I see that, well, obviously, Berwick. Assuming that's only Berwick Park, maybe there's other irrigation associated with it. It it's it stands out thirty one thousand eight twenty for one, one month worth of water. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
That is actually for two months of usage.
Two months. And then the next highest one looks like it's Jewel Park, which is less than half of that amount. And then Ocean View Irrigation. I'm, I could only guess what that is. Maybe that's Lover's Point irrigation. Eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars.
I would have to take a look at the specific bill and the address and the meter number, Your Honor, to know specifically what what account that's going towards. I could say, though, that Jewel Park also has the bathroom in the building associated with it.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, Berwick does not. Now, I'm I'm trying to visualize how much water is going to these different places. I'm having a hard time. Anyhow, just observation, understanding what parks are taking, how much water might be a useful exercise, I think, considering the amount of money involved. And we're always talking about water, the price of water. All right, that was received the report. Now it's eight o'clock. Do you want to take a short recess? We have two items left. Do you want to pile on ahead?
I'd like to pile on ahead here, Mayor.
Okay. Then next item is item thirteen A, General Plan Update. Mr. Alfon, welcome. You're here in person.
I am here in person. Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As you're all aware, the city is in the process of updating its nineteen ninety four general plan. And if we could go to the next slide, please, after this has been up. Consultant firms are currently preparing to submit their proposals to the city by December second. The slide shows an overview of the timeline that we are expecting to follow, after which the city will begin its review of the proposals. As a part of the review process, an evaluation committee made up of members of the city council, planning commission, staff and other qualified individuals is being created. Once the committee's work is finished, qualified bidders will be invited to interview with the city before final selection is made in late January of twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is that the city council appoint a member or members to the evaluation committee to assist staff in the review of the documents. We are hoping to have one or two members to evaluate the proposals and be on the interview panel. The chosen member or members could sit on both panels or choose to participate in only one. This concludes my report. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have any members of the public with us still? Doesn't doesn't look like it.
We do. We have I don't have a count, but we've got a good half a dozen or so, or more, actually.
Okay, great. Councilmember Coletti.
They've been remarkably quiet.
Yes.
I'd I'd like to volunteer for both positions.
And, Your Honor, I would support Luke being our selecte.
I thought I heard the offer was for one or two. Is that? Oh, two positions.
I think it's two. I think it's one or two.
Through the mayor, you could have one or two council people on the on the committee.
Mayor Protem Emilio, are you volunteering? We're looking for volunteers.
I volunteer. The only thing is, on the January thirteenth, I will not be here. And I don't know if that's a problem. Ms. Jordan.
Slide of the of the schedule, please.
Yeah, the schedule showed, I think, January thirteenth, and I'm not going to be here at that time. Yeah, selected consultant interviews, January thirteenth.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Emilio could be joined as a part of the evaluation committee. You don't have to participate in the interview panel itself.
Okay, I'll volunteer.
All right, well, we've got two volunteers. I I think Councilmember Smith and I are passing.
Passing, and I'll make a mention that we select those.
Well, but we haven't heard from Councilmember Fedora.
I'm passing too. I'm good.
All right, so I think, Mr. Alfon, you have your two volunteers.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. All right, and we're finished with that item, then moving on to the last item, thirteen B, Community Survey. And that's Ms. Francis. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm here to present on the twenty twenty two community survey results. So as you know, on September twenty third, we opened the survey up. We did a public outreach campaign that include mailers to every single address in the city of Pacific Grove. As well as submitting publications in the city manager's newsletter, online and social media. Results were issued this last week. In total, we had over twelve hundred respondents. So tonight I am going to cover just the general takeaways. The full report is available online. There's a link included in the agenda report. Overall, respondents presented general contentment with city operations. They were pleased with the services of the fire department, library and police department. In addition, they expressed dissatisfaction dissatisfaction with road maintenance, city finances and planning and building safety operations, and prioritize these issues for added city investments. Respondents also felt that city staff should prioritize investments in the Parks and Rec Department and the Police Department. As far as the top suggestions for improvement, it would be to focus on sidewalk and road maintenance, protecting and maintaining the city's open and green spaces, more affordable housing options and fewer luxury apartments and hotels. Other prominent suggestions focused on the proposed skate park location, added police presence and staff, increased transparency around city finances and speeding enforcement, as early as to traffic. So that really concludes my presentation. The survey results report was pretty robust. And I know that City Council had directed city staff to complete this survey. And hopefully, it will be useful for developing council goals come January, when the new council members come on board and to look at budgeting and project and program opportunities.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Andrew Kay.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Andy Cubica. Yeah, on on a subject of roads and sidewalks. There was a consultant report said that we're supposed to be spending at least two point four, two point six million dollars a year on an average. Maybe it's two point eight. I can't remember right now. We've been spending between one four and one six. So we've been shorting the city over a million dollars a year for the last four years or five years since this report was written. You know, we we say that the city has a good, robust budget, but it has a robust budget because we're letting the city deteriorate. We have the lowest PCI in the county, and that's a pavement report. We're the lowest ones on the peninsula. Sidewalks, if you go down a city street downtown on Lighthouse, I've turned in several reports, requests for repairs. Nothing has been done. There's holes in the sidewalk in front of the International Pizza Place. There's holes, buckled sidewalks in front of where Poppy Hall used to be. I've turned in a report on that. Yes, we have good, a good balanced budget, as long as we don't do any work and take care of the city. So I think the city report, the survey from the residents indicates that they want the city to be taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. This community survey generally fails to elicit meaningful responses. And the few specifics we were allowed to provide were not were not listed in the results. I remember the community survey two years ago managed by the city's transparency consultant. That survey asked questions that allowed the community to make meaningful comments about city departments, including the city manager. He disregarded the results pertaining to himself, and there was some grumbling that people could respond more than once and that the survey was not scientific. Since I don't respond more than once unless a survey invites me to, I can't compare the two surveys on that basis. And I don't think that this survey is scientific. In fact, we had a good survey before, and the results were presented to the public by the city manager with very informative graphics and all the written public comments were included in the report. However, the very high percentage of negative assessments that the city manager received were not acknowledged in the report. In contrast, the current survey was very general, though I can't cite examples since it's no longer available and not included in the report. And the current survey results are being presented with general summaries and none of the actual written comments. What information can be gleaned from these survey results that's useful in guiding how the city functions? I think what you can glean is that the city manager doesn't want to be scrutinized. Yes, there were four times as many responses to this survey as the previous one because the full community was informed about the survey this year. And that's a good thing. So I'd like to see a combination next time with extensive public notice and attention to the detailed content of the responses. In the meantime, I request that the city provide the actual written responses of the public in this survey, which we took the time to type out. And my, yes, my daughter filled out the survey her first time. She's thirty years old now. And she's disappointed not to see everyone's responses. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Deimer.
Welcome.
Thank you. I remember back to when our city manager brought this whole Zen City thing and how it was such a useful tool and how wonderful and oh, it was going to help us so much. I'm not impressed. I don't know how much they cost us or anything else, but I don't think they do a very good job. And the most meaningful comments came out of the dashboard because I gather that Zen City kind of monitors social media or other things to glean comments about that maybe residents post. I'm not exactly sure what this is, but it's not. I'm not impressed with Zen City. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm just taking a look at this and looking at the executive summary. I I actually think, I'm not going to argue the merits of the scientific nature of the of the survey, but or the significant statistical significance of it. But what I do see here is some things that I agree with, that I think in the next two years, I certainly will be wanting to address serving with the next council. With the next council, um. That is the road maintenance. Streets and sidewalks, I think we need to get more money there and even, and as Mr. Cubica noted, you know, we're. We're, I don't think we're only in a good situation because we're not spending any money, and we're definitely doing some things on here, in fact, we heard tonight that. We're uh doing things in the capital improvements area, so we're definitely doing work, so. I wouldn't go that far, but I would say that. We do need to uh start to spend more on streets and sidewalks and finish some of these projects that we've had going in the hopper for. At least, you know, most of the time I've been on the council for the last five to six years, so. Um, there are some things that need to get done, so I would like to see that, um, that would be. One of my top three priorities, I think secondly. And that's also noted here in this executive summary, which I actually find super helpful, is that we start to prioritize in parks and rec. And we beef up our rec department and that might. Cost us some money, in other words, we might have more employee cost. There, you know, a, a slight delta there to add on a body, you know, to add an employee on to the rec department, to have someone full-time or part-time or whatever we can do. To get um our youth programs back online, get our middle school program back online. Um, because I think it's great for kids to have a place to go. Um, so those are the two things that I kind of stuck out to me. Um, and uh, so that, those are the things that I think are, are actually very helpful from the survey, um, just seeing some general ideas. Um, that might help us, thank you.
Mayor Protem Emilio.
Yes, um, it was interesting to see the survey, but I do want to mention a couple of projects that have been. Completed and this is not all inclusive, but David Avenue has been finished, Funston, uh, the uh. Problems with that was resolved, uh, in the cure, some sidewalks, I believe, in front of the David Avenue. Uh, the charter school there, uh, Congress was finished, the sidewalks were finished. Uh, there are some progress going on on our CFP projects and want to think public works on that.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, mayor, uh. And thank you for completing this uh community survey, uh, it is really very timely, uh, because we're going to have a goal discussions uh fairly shortly. And it'll feed into this overall loop, um, so I'm happy about that. Uh, I, I view this survey as uh just a, a glimpse of what we are doing, uh, just from a city standpoint, also from a council standpoint as well. And, and I see this as really room for improvement and in quite a few areas, notably like looks like road maintenance, but. But I, I, I viewed it generally across, across the board, so we have a task ahead in front of us. I think what we need to do as a council is really prioritize our decisions as we move forward towards aspects that we're hearing over here, so thank you, um. The, the only comment I had was, uh, there are these surveys now being conducted by Zen City. Not only on community, but other areas too, it looks like, uh, and I would like to see a historical uh picture. Of these survey results on the city website somewhere. Right now, it looks like I can go to the front page and access this. Uh, but what if, what about six months from now, where will this be? And where will the other survey that we did a year or two from now? I, I would, I would say that it would be a good placeholder for council to look at something on the website, which looks at historical aspects all in one spot, thank you. Uh. Yeah, Mister Harvey.
Thank you, I didn't mean to step on any council member, I just have some comments in general, when the council's ready for that. Is that acceptable, mayor?
Yeah, please.
Okay, great, I, I just wanted to make the, the council, remind the council and make the public aware that. The council direction for the survey was to conduct an annual community survey. To assess how the citizens view city government, that was the, the direction. So I think that this survey responded to that. If the next seated council wants to have a different type of survey, certainly the direction could be provided. And we, and we can, we can do that, so if you're wondering why this was a general survey, it's because of that direction asked for, just a general survey. Um, and then I just want to speak on behalf of. Any other city manager in the region, I mean, it, you know, city managers are, you know, there was a comment from the public about, you know, city managers not being under scrutiny, we're. You know, you're, you're constantly under scrutiny as a city manager, and I do read all the comments that come in. From the public that are sent to the city council, so if there is a concern. About the city manager's performance, I certainly see it in all those emails, so I'm, I'm aware and, and try to respond to that as best I can, thank you. Oh, lastly, I want to thank Ms. Francis, I thought she did a great job working with Zen City, uh, getting this launched. Uh, Ms. Francis also had the help of Ms. Hallaby, I believe, for the postcard component of it, a little bit, maybe? Yeah, okay, sorry, I'm confusing surveys, but anyway, just want to thank. Ms. Francis and Zen City for, for doing this, and there will be a skate park survey coming, I think, next week. Um, so look, look for that, uh, more chances to participate and tell us how you feel about a certain thing, thank you.
So, um, uh, thank you for those additional comments and, um. Several of them uh strike a chord with me, um, so, um. My understanding from this survey was because the city is already paying Zen City, I think it's twenty-five thousand. Thirty-five thousand, um, for providing um services, other services, um. That uh, this is survey was already included in that fee, so no additional funds, so I'm like, well. Since they've already been paid for it, why don't they do the survey, um? So that was the first thing, uh, second of all, speaking to councilmember Pedori's point. We have had surveys in the past and. I think the surveys cost on the order of twenty-five thousand dollars for a, you know, professionally run survey. And with very specific questions and. Um, some of those surveys have had the same question, so one could do as. You suggested was to see what historically, how do you track? The performance of city, of the city on certain issues, and I think that is valuable. But that requires a very specific um, survey effort. And um, part of it is, uh, you know, you get, you get what comes out of it is. A, uh, base is a factor of what you put into it, so it's the questions, and if the questions are general. And Mister Harvey said, I, it's a, we didn't really, council didn't talk about the specific questions, it was more of a general. Um, how, how do people feel about different aspects of the city, so that's what we've got, so it's not. I would say terribly, it's not a high quality survey, but we didn't put much into it. Um, it's just my reaction, I think there is some worthwhile information, um. Out of it, there's some information that doesn't, you know, doesn't make sense, uh. I think some of the assessments kind of funny when you say, um. Um, where they, where the survey says, we're going to spend money on this, but they're doing a great job, I'm like. Well, if they're doing a great job, why are you spending more money there, um? And I take these results with a grain, grain of salt, but they're just some more data points, I think it is useful when we talk about council goals. Anyhow, that's my thought, anything else? Right, well, thank you very much. And let's see. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you to the public for participating and listening, thank you to staff. And to my colleagues for being here tonight. Have a good evening, meeting adjourned.